Hey gang, in this episode, we're going to be talking to Krista Arnt, who is running for school board in region one for the Boyertown area school district. We talked Thursday evening, that was live on riverside.fm and also on Yerg's Radio. For future interviews, you can get that information from the ticker on the homepage of yergs.com and all of our social media. Let's see what Krista has to say. So everybody, welcome to the, where we at today is Thursday night edition of Yerg's Tonight, and also another special edition of Up the Middle earlier. Also, you can get us on Yerg's Radio. Easiest way to do that is Google it. I promise you, I will be the very first Yerg's Radio that comes up. Otherwise, just go to yergs.com, click on the Up the Middle tab, and in the dropdown box, the first option will be Yerg's Radio. So let's get to it. With us, this is number three in a series of interviews with candidates from the Boyertown School Board election, the Board of Directors campaign that's happening right now, that will come to at least a temporary close on Tuesday, which is Election Day in Pennsylvania and throughout the country. Yeah, you're gonna see that the media card craps out sometimes, so you might see my screen go black. I'm still here, I can still hear you, it's still getting our audio, we just keep rolling. So yeah, Tuesday, Election Day, and Pennsylvania now has, what are they calling it? Is it early election or an election period or?
So the mail-in ballot or?
So I'm not sure. I have not lived in Pennsylvania in more than 20 years. When I first started my Secret Service career, three years into that, I transferred to the San Francisco field office and I only get back to visit. So every other place doesn't have Election Day anymore. It's an election period where you can still go to the polls and California is even to a point now where because of IDs and scanning this, that, or the other thing, you can go to any poll you want. And you didn't even have to go to your poll, you can go wherever and they'll know that it's you and done. So tell us first, and this by the way, is Krista Arnt from the Boyertown area. Which region are you from, Krista?
So I am from region one in Boyertown. So myself and Michelle Swiceford are actually running for the two open seats for school board for region one.
Okay. Yes, so tell us how the, whatever it is, early voting, the voting period, voting by mail, what can they do?
So sorry if I'm a little bit distracted, I have my daughter this evening by myself. My husband works, yeah, my husband works at the fire department, so apologies. So yeah, you could do it a couple of different ways. If you have requested an absentee ballot, you can do it that way. You can do mail-in balloting, you can go to the polls on November 7th. Believe they open at seven, I'm always a couple hours off, and I believe they close at six or seven in the evening and you can vote in person, the old school way, like the rest of us will be. I will certainly be there in person, so I'm excited to meet folks like I did for the primary, coming in and out of the polls and just, you know, say hi regardless of how this turns out.
Okay. And speaking of how this is turning out, from when you started to now, what type of progress or stagnant periods or declines have you seen in the campaign, in your campaign?
I, I can tell you that I'm the type of person who likes to sit back and just kind of watch what's going on. I think through observation, we are the best informed, which is why you won't see me extremely vocal, but in sitting back and kind of watching activity, I've seen a little bit more unrest, I guess, with how folks are managing the school budget. And that's a strong point of where I come in, because I manage multimillion dollar budgets as part of my job, and I have done it for years at a national level. So I understand both within education, because I was an educator, education is a large part of what I do as a job in my program. Hello. Now, I understand how important it is to allocate funds towards critical pieces of educational programs, depending on what the educational program is, you know, whether it be at the middle school, high school level, whether it be universities. But the issue is there are a lot of folks in the district who, you know, are, have differences of opinion on how a budget is being allocated towards, you know, giving it to charter schools, allocating towards certain programs in school, allocating towards athletics. You will never make everybody happy, but I, I am really concerned that there isn't a lot of risk management planning that is going into long-term budget planning for the organization and for the school board. And really, that's when, you know, you get to preemptively prevent issues where, you know, schools are falling apart and, you know, programs like field hockey need a turf field because it's putting families in a precarious position where they have to travel great lengths and the players, for example, are put in a position where they don't have the facilities they need, yet they still in some capacity are able to successfully compete at a national level, showing you how talented these folks are when they play. So yeah, I mean, a little bit of risk management and strategic planning and roadmapping when it comes to your budget allocation goes a long way. You typically will do, you know, a one-year plan, a three-year plan, and then you will allocate budget towards discretionary funding for, you know, things that may accidentally fall apart or, and it just, in, with some of the disrepair that we're seeing in the buildings, for example, it's almost like the strategy with managing the budget was, it's kind of like if you don't know it's fair, then, you know, you don't have to do anything about it, it was just kind of to ignore some of those things. And it's at the point where, I'll use an example, if you maintain your own household, so keep your house in order first, right? If you maintain your household and, you know, put small allocations over time, then you're not going to have, you know, as many large problematic disasters down the road because you were doing that preventive maintenance. And I feel like on a lot of these areas of the district, that preventive maintenance isn't done, they, they kind of take large sums and, you know, reallocate it here because, you know, there are complaints or uproars about it and they don't, you know, fund like small incremental changes in it. And the small incremental changes are really what makes the largest difference, not only to the organizations, but also to the taxpayers, right? It's inevitable with the change in, in society and in economics, that costs of living are going to go up and taxes are going to increase. It would be wonderful to be able to decrease them, but you want to be able to do that very minimally and incrementally, instead of always having these arguments back and forth about, you know, having to raise it some phenomenal percentage and, you know, then people are asking, why, like, all of a sudden, do we need this money? Well, because we've kind of slept under the rug for so long, you know, and now it's a surprise to both.
Somebody want to say hi?
Oh, Olivia. Hi, so this is my daughter, so she is the reason that I do everything I do here. So not only do I work probably 10 to 12 hours a day on a regular basis, I also take care of my daughter. So yes, ma'am, she'll be going to Culbroughdale here in about a year and a half.
That's where I went.
Oh nice. So I, we'll get it when I'm done, okay? So let me ask you a question, when you went to school, what was your favorite part of school?
Summer vacation. I was, somebody thought, somebody thought that I was really smart, and so they labeled me gifted, and I don't think that back then, there was a thorough enough or intelligent enough differentiation between gifted, as in like creative, and actually a good student. And as a result, it wasn't until college that I was properly diagnosed with a learning disability. So I was expected to get good grades my whole career and I had no idea what I was doing in some cases. So what I really liked was the time away from class when I was in the gifted program. There would be like, it would be like one day a week, I think it was, we would even go to another school and spend the day there. And we would have to get out early because we'd have to get on the high school buses to go home and all kinds of, all kinds of things that way. But, so of course, the early dismissal was cool too. But yeah, it was, I liked elementary. I had a bunch of good people at the elementary that, at Culbroughdale. And I'm even a co-host, you know, we mentioned before we went on the air, we mentioned Jane Stahl was one of my junior high teachers. And yeah, I've got, what troubles me, I've got fond memories of Boyertown for my scholastic career, as much as I'm, you know, happy to be out. But everything that I'm hearing is without question, not the Boyertown that it used to be, or that it could be. So mine, and then, how long have you, are you a native to Boyertown, or how long have you lived there? And what kind of progression or decline have you seen in the system?
So I am not a Boyertown native, and it gives me a really interesting broad external view. So I actually grew up in New Jersey and my dad was one of those folks that sent me to private school, because the public school that was near my home was unsafe and he thought that I would get a better education because of the state of the district and private school. And he was a single father and he worked his butt off to raise myself and my sister and, you know, we're very blessed to be successful and hardworking and have learned morals and values and learned, you know, what a good education looks like versus what we could have gotten. And I think that's what I struggle with here. What, so I've been here about four and a half years now, almost five, with my husband. So we moved from Pensburg in Upper Perk, and Upper Perk is a wonderful district. We moved there originally because I heard very good things about it, but we wanted a larger home for our daughter. And this is where we found, and my sister has lived here for 16 or 17 years now, and I have two nephews have grown up through the system. And I've definitely seen a decline in the, how do I phrase this? I'm going to say the resources available when it comes to educators, they don't have enough, folks are leaving the district and students are sitting in study halls for hours and actually to the point where, I remember when I was in school and we would get a study hall because teacher would be out and they couldn't find a substitute, and I'd be like, oh my God, you know, this is our first study hall in forever, I'm so excited to have that break from learning. Kids are sitting there almost begging to have something of value and, because they can't find educators for them, and it's really causing them to suffer. And I think my biggest concern in watching the district over the years I have been here, knowing what it feels like to get a really great education, wanting desperately when I was younger to actually go into the public school system, because all of my friends were there, everything I knew was the public school system, and not experiencing it until later in my life. I am concerned that my daughter will be faced with the same struggles and, you know, I'm a firm believer in public education and I'm a firm believer that no matter what the state of affairs is when she enters and goes through the school district, that it will teach her lessons through life on, you know, how to traverse obstacles and handle adversity and how to self-motivate to educate herself on the things that she really values and interests her. But another concern with that is, you know, often the educators are an extension of family and they're the ones that form bonds with these children and really self-motivate them to educate themselves, instead of just relying on the teachers. And they start to struggle, right? Because you don't get that, that motivation. And like these days, it's so different, right? Like both parents are working and you don't, you would love to be more involved in your child's life and you try, but you can't feasibly be involved as you were, you know, back in the day when, you know, maybe it was more common to have one parent at home. The dynamics of families here have changed, so there are, the dynamics of learners here have changed, children. So one of the things I learned when I was a teacher in high school is, everybody has a different way of digesting information you give them. And you really, teachers, I think one of the things that I see in the daycare that she goes to, which is phenomenal and she absolutely loves the teachers there, they've made such a difference with hers, they cater to different learning styles because they have the ability to keep the classes small, versus if the classes get larger, they usually don't have a problem finding educators who are doing it for the right reason, who love what they do, who are very great at what they do, love the children. Because, you know, the management of her daycare understands that, you know, you bring in talent by creating a safe, sound, and welcoming environment and having your educators feel valued. And I really see and I hear a lot, I actually monitor the Moms Board on Facebook a lot, more so because I got on there to find things to do around the area when I was new, and now I like to just see as different people's opinions on various things, whether it be school, things to do, places to go, et cetera. But they're really concerned about the, the state of, you know, lack of educators in there, it's hurting the quality and overall, it's hurting the school system, right? Because if, you know, word is getting around that children aren't learning, you know, they're going to start sending them to charter school, private school, taking money away from the school system, with everything going on with the vouchers and et cetera. But yeah, I mean, I worry that she's going to be faced with even more of a deficit when she comes in and it's going to put more onus on me as a parent, which I love teaching my child, because I think home education supplemental to education in a school system is really beneficial to reinforce what she's learning, but puts more stress on you as a parent, trying to work a job and take care of the household and God knows what else is there, spend time with your children, to have to educate them in things that they're not getting, you know, fundamental basics. Like, I mean, I remember my dad would reinforce math and science with me in fun ways and, you know, literally feel like I'm going to have to sit here at a table at seven o'clock at night with my elementary school child and to teach them math, because these like schools in Boyertown don't have the capacity to teach her, because, you know, teachers are leaving in droves, because they're either not getting paid, not getting the resources they need to, you know, do things successfully, not getting education, continuing education in cyber with what I do, you will never survive because of continuous changing landscape, and it is that way in education, because it is so dynamic these days as well. And I feel like there isn't enough resource allocated towards continuing education for educators, special, special programs and special needs educators, et cetera. They want to do it, but they're going to need support to continue to be successful.
Yeah, yeah, 100%. Okay. So you were the first, you're the fourth person to say all of that, in that, having mentioned teachers leaving, having mentioned the excessive study halls, and, you know, for a high school kid or junior high kid to be begging to go to class and not to study hall, that's saying something. You know, we're, we're at a very critical level there at that point. And I can tell you from, you know, personal experience, having been in a poor school district now, next come the gangs, and after that, it's the drugs, if they're not there in droves already.
Yeah, and it takes strong, strong leadership to kind of keep that stuff out, that that's what all the parents are banding together and trying to not let happen around here. And all the strong leadership is going elsewhere, because they feel valued elsewhere, because of how folks are approaching, bringing them on to their districts, and like people are moving out. And I know the housing market makes it a little difficult to see that right now, because, you know, the economy stinks. But once the housing market turns around, you'll see people leave just for the purpose of, hey, you know, there's a better district, better funding, or there's a private school somewhere that isn't within feasible driving distance of like managing work and school that is somewhere else. So they're willing to kind of give up where they're living, moving somewhere else and in around the area and like take that jump just to see their children succeed. And that's like literally why we're here as parents and why we live is to make sure that our children succeed. Like I come from very science-based background in my education and, you know, I don't believe everything can be solved with science, but also logic, right? Like we're here to make sure our children have it a little bit better than we did, still learn, but have it easier and actually be able to advance more quickly and learn more things to help society advance, to help our communities advance and to help support our communities and support the values that we grew up with.
Yeah, so a couple of things you just touched on is actually getting perfect segue into what we were going to talk about next anyway. One correction, everybody just likes to jump on the bandwagon that the economy sucks because they hear that on Fox News or CNN. Statistically, this is actually one of the best economies we had in a while, and it's, it's, there's, has actually been a steady growth. And on top of that, if you want to say that our economy sucks, which is fine, and not that you said, use those words specifically, that's, that's how I roll here, I don't sugarcoat. We are still, nationally, we are, or globally, we are still the best, one of the best in the world. Other, other economies are, if we're so bad, they're doing even worse. But you mentioned the housing market. And one of the things we talked about in the previous two episodes, and I've talked about with Jane on our other show together, and with Donna U. Savage, when she was on about two weeks ago, is the correlation between real estate values and the quality of the school system. And I can tell you for free, because of the quality school, or the lacking quality school system that I moved to, not having a child at the time that I moved here, I didn't care about it. I'm in a three-bedroom, two-bath house on a canal. And what I mean by that is I have a dead-end street out front and a dead-end canal that takes me to the Gulf of Mexico out back. That same type of property to include the canal and the space for the boat, in Marina Del Rey, Los Angeles, where I moved from, is a $3.2 million house. Not far from here on St. Pete Beach, it's a $1.8 million house. I bought this house for $450,000. A third of what I would have paid an hour away, because of the school system. It's not just, oh, I'm not in downtown Tampa. We're all in downtown Tampa. But I know that the school system that I'm in is much less quality than the other surrounding counties. And again, because some of the other language I use, I'm not going to say exactly which county I'm in, because I don't want any visitors. But I guess for the general area, that's the reason why. I'm in about a prop, approximately a square mile neighborhood. There are more than 200 listings in my neighborhood at the time of this program or the time of this recording. That's how, that's how bad people are needed, there were younger people coming in and they're turning around and leaving. And yeah, Hurricane Adalia had something to do with it. But at 8%, do you really see people getting a mortgage? And that's where, that's where the economy could be better. At 8%, seven and a half to 8%, do you really see anybody getting that many mortgages right now? And it's not going to happen.
Yeah.
So leading into that, we had talked about the, the real estate values. Apparently, now's not a good time to get hair and makeup done, you're already on the air, you know that, right? Olivia, you're late. For the, for the radio listeners, our guest is getting her hair done and is being fed a marshmallow, or what does that look like?
I go see Pop from school. We're still celebrating Halloween and then we're going to start decorating for Thanksgiving. We are that family.
Thank, yeah. Yeah. The Christmas is, Thanksgiving is just Christmas halftime. What kind of voters are you finding as you canvass houses or meet with the community? Everybody else has been saying that it's a, it's largely a senior voting population, and that's the reason why the lower taxes, less into the, the school system, is because the people who are voting, your boss, so to speak, doesn't have kids in the system.
Well, I have a couple of different views on that, from what I do know and who I am talking to. So, you know, there are folks who have grandkids who are affected by the system. So we have to put that into perspective and, and they care just as much about their grandkids as they did about their kids, right? So I'm not going to say that they don't care about it, but the dynamic there, another dynamic, you're, you know, I'm not going to try to put words in people's mouths, but I'm just trying to think of all the, the dynamics is, they have to, a lot of them, I'm not going to generalize, but have to be more conscious about budget, right? You know, a lot of folks love where they live, they love the community, it's what they've known for a very long time, and, you know, you want to be able to live out your life here. My grandmother's still over in New Jersey, she is in the same house that she built with my grandfather, and although it would have been easier for her to live somewhere else in a community these days, because he's been gone for a couple of years now, you know, she's holding on to that. It's a lot of memories for her, that is the good time in her life. So, you know, there are a lot of folks that are like that. I wish I could be in a house and be in an area with my family, grow and appreciate the memories and never leave, but, you know, they also have to worry about their taxes. They have a fixed income and fixed budget, and rightfully so, right? Like we all try to plan for that and cost of living, you know, just keep incrementally going up. So they have to be conscious of, you know, the school system and school tax is something that's argued over very often, because it's something that the public still has a lot of local control over, I think, is trying to persuade what happens with those funds and how much they want to fund their kids. So, you know, kids are suffering in that respect, but the parents who may not be able to go out and vote, it's like some parents are interested in what's going on, but they're so inundated with just trying to make money to make ends meet, that they may either not get out to the polls, totally miss deadlines with getting the mail-in ballot submitted. And, you know, I'm not going to say they're also on a budget, but I think because they're very deep in and they know how the school system also helps them firsthand to just manage their day-to-day responsibilities, so they don't have to worry about their kid's safety, they don't have to worry about their kid not, having folks there that they can trust and confide in and get a really great education and, you know, perform in activities to help them, you know, become, have it a little easier than their parents do right now, working their butts off. I feel for a lot of the moms that post on the Moms Board that I see, I wish I could help each one of them. I mean, you know, my budget, my husband and I also live on a budget, so I know how that is. We have a child and we have to be very conscious with, you know, what we spend on school and, and, you know, we don't want our taxes to go up because we're affected just the same. But I think that more so those parents have less time because they're still working their butts off. So I don't know if it's so much a coincidental age gap, just because, you know, the majority of folks who aren't voting are, are like inundated with work and overwhelmed. I can tell you, I've been trying to make a doctor's appointment and I get so inundated with work sometimes that it's been two months and I finally remembered today to put it on my calendar for tomorrow, because I don't have time. So if you can't even have time to get your health taken care of because of how overworked we are and how stressed then we are as families trying to manage children and families and all the dynamics, you know, you think voting is going to be the first forefront on folks' minds, because they, they believe that, you know, the folks that have positions where they can influence the stuff are going to do the right things. And they're actually realizing that they might not be, and, and these concerns are finally getting to a point, I think, over the last couple of years here in the district, where they are going to make more of an effort, but it's going to take time. Cultural time and cultural shift takes time, it's not an instant overnight thing, unless, you know, folks band together and all of a sudden, they're so disgruntled that, you know, everybody comes out of the woodwork and votes. I mean, I'm saying it could happen, but I can tell you, managing security programs nationally and having to change cultural mindset with the use of technology and advancement and things like that amongst folks who may not, may be scared of it, may not have used it a lot and be familiar with it, or may worry about how it impedes operations, et cetera, it takes years for cultural change to happen. And I think, yeah, so like they're, they're at the point where they're now, I think the eyes are opening and they're realizing that they have to figure out how to make time to do that.
So what are your first steps then? You know, you're not going to knock this all out in one term. What's your first step for, you get elected and that's to what, a two-year term?
So I'm running for the four-year seat, because when I go, go do something, I go big or go home and, and I know how long shift takes, which is why I dedicated my time to running for a year.
Right. Good deal. So what, what, what do you want to see over that four-year, what's your four-year plan?
I mean, one of the biggest things that's hurting the district, I hate to say it, but in every business and every fundamental system, it comes back to money and funding and resources, right? So I really would like to take a deeper look at the budget, talk to folks as to why certain decisions were made and hoping that they'll open up to me and be really transparent on, on all ends, right? Not just folks that think one way. I want to know different perspectives, so I can figure out if I can make recommendations to help better manage to, to at least start turning those types of things around, the slow, small incremental allocations to places in the system that actually the slow, small incremental allocations to, um, places in the system that actually need it. So I think that's one place I can really help because I, like I manage multimillion-dollar budgets every day. I know what it's like to manage a really, um, important program on a very tight budget because we are in the same situation as are a lot of folks in my position. So I think that's something I could bring to the table. Um, there's actually, if, if folks were... Yep, go, I'll be right there, okay? I'll be right there. Okay. Um, so if you have been paying attention to, uh, what's going on federally with the K-12 and cybersecurity, I think that's something that I could bring a lot to the table. Um, kids are getting slammed, so you're worried about their education now, but think about when the, all their data is compromised because people are oversharing and not securing and because of the tight budgets, IT people do security jobs in school districts at this level and it is scary because they try to do their best. The security is such an intricate field that they don't know. And that's something, part of the reason I got involved in this, I'm going to go off camera because my child needs to use the potty, but I'm taking this with me.
Okay.
Apologies. Um, so, so, um, part of the reason I started down this path is I've been thinking about how I could get more involved, um, in the district and realize, hey, maybe I'll start, um, offering free mentorship in cybersecurity best practices and helping folks. And then, you know, someone said, hey, the, the board, um, elections are up soon. I'm like, oh, cool. Yeah, I could do that because I could also impart there. But with the federal, um, focus on K-12 and it's going to leverage more, um, expectation for resources that people just don't have. Um, so it's something that I could definitely help with to kind of offload and also I know how to find resources for free or nothing, or form partnerships that could definitely help, um, over a period of time. That's something I do in my job right now with information sharing, with forming partnerships to, um, help folks with training and awareness because we don't have budget for that either, right? So I think there are a couple of ways that I can help, but I mean, one of the first things you do when you come into a new position, um, and I do this when I come into new companies and build programs is I just talk to folks and I learn and I sit and listen and I dedicate the time to that. Now that you're in the trenches, it's an entirely different perspective sometimes than when you're on the outside saying, oh, this should happen. Okay, well now that I'm in the trenches and really talking to these folks one-on-one and, you know, really involved in the decision-making, maybe I can see things in a different perspective. So I think listening and learning is key to being successful.
Nice. So let's get into now that you, uh, we're at an opportunity where it's okay for you to make, uh, some funny faces. What, uh, what, uh, has your experience been in running against members of Moms for Liberty?
Boy, that's tough. I try not to get involved in politics, but somehow it ends up finding you because I really don't think that school board should be political because it's about the kids. Um, but I have huge concerns. I think one of the things that stood out to me is, you know, they've been touting this parental bill of rights. Has anybody even read, um, uh, like FERPA and, and all those like privacy laws that are out there for education and different sectors? All of those rights already exist. You don't need to sign some fictitious bill from some organization that like, I'm pretty sure they, you know, I'm, I'm going to piss someone off, but they like hand out new tinfoil helmets for every season when they get together and figure out how they can undermine, um, success. So part of like my issue with organizations like that is the motive and intentions. And if the intentions aren't forthright, it's a problem and they're just hurting the kids for, for their own, I, I, I don't like goals. I don't even know what they aim to, to achieve out of that other than personal gain, which is all, I'm, I'm a realist and I'm, I'm a very authentic person. It, you know, excuse my language, it's fucked.
Yeah. No. And you couldn't have said it any better, even in front of a toddler. Uh, to confirm something, did we talk about Moms for Liberty in preparation for this interview?
No, we didn't. I, I've actually been reading how, um, so I look at endorsements, um, and because it tells me a lot about folks and their character and I've seen a couple, um, of the folks that I am running against or well, the one that I'm running against, let's just say a couple of other folks that are running for this election are actually endorsed by them and some like 1770, like I've never, Moms of Liberty, I've heard of the 1776 or whatever group that like, and it's scary. And I think my eyes have been opened that politics has even gotten to this level that there are organizations out there that will feed parents and, and voters bullshit and make them feel like they don't have rights unless they follow their lead. And I think the worst thing that you can do is to mislead folks into thinking that they have no other options and manipulating them. I think that is horrid.
Hitler, 1935. And my audience already knows that because I did a feature on Moms for Liberty and they are in fact a hate group. Uh, I'm just more recently learning about 1776, but I'm doing some preparations on a video for them as well. It won't be out in time for Tuesday, but, uh, this isn't going to be over on Tuesday either. Um, yeah, uh, my, I asked you why i- if we prepared and talked about that in preparation for today's interview, because you said some of the exact things that I already said and that is about them wanting power. That's all it comes down to. Um, and, and it's fascist.
Has been, yeah, I mean, uh, my biggest concern especially like we're supposed to be doing this for the kids and you're more concerned about your personal motives than to seeing our young ones succeed. So even if you don't have a child in the district, you as a part of the, a member of the community who, you know, everybody perceives to be an upstanding member, like you should be ashamed of yourself if you're being supported by folks who have those types of motives or even associated, like shame on you is what I'm saying. I mean, I would rather speak the truth and lose and be able to help folks in a different way because I know I have a lot to offer and there are other ways that I can help this community if I don't, you know, succeed in the school board race, that I have no issues being totally transparent. You're never going to make everybody happy, but it's better to be authentic because you, you know, stand to lose nothing being that way.
Yeah, exactly. Good for you. Uh, one more question, then I'll let you go. You had touched on it a few times and we didn't hit it at the very beginning. So you said about managing, uh, multimillion dollar accounts. Can you share more about what your actual day job is and how that can help with the school board?
Yeah, of course. And actually that's one of the reasons I thought that I could be successful and, you know, I'm never going to be able to fix everything. It's a, a team sport, right? I played athletics, I got a college scholarship in basketball, I had a great GPA, so I understood how to manage both. I understand how important both sides of the house are. I understand how important arts are, my daughter loves them. So I feel like I take a holistic approach to life, but, um, I actually am a chief information security officer for a national orthopedic practice. Um, that is publicly known. I do national, uh, keynotes and all sorts of fun things to help folks, um, continue education because part of, I dealt with a little bit the same as you did. Um, I had trouble, um, taking tests coming up in school and, you know, my dad, it was really easy for him. And for me, I'm a hands-on learner and it's really difficult, you know, it's one of those things like, oh, why, um, you know, why are you failing your tests? I'm like, in, in theory, when I read about it and I do kind of stuff hands-on, it's great, but when I go to take the test, my scores don't reflect my aptitude. So I've been able to get really far in life, just, you know, hands-on learning myself and, and experimenting with things versus, you know, great test scores. But part of, to answer your question, um, I manage, um, so in cybersecurity, you manage multimillion dollar budgets and you actually have to be very cautious to, um, align your strategy with what the business operations need to be successful. You're there to serve the organization, you're not there to further, you know, your own career goals by building the most secure program in the world. Like that, that's wonderful and I would love to be able to do that, but, um, you know, you have to have the right program, not the best program for the organization. And I think working with your, with your business, business constituents, which, you know, for us would be not only the district administration, but parents, um, taxpayers, et cetera, would be my stakeholders, my constituents. I understand how to, you know, discuss things that are going on with both sides and form a strategy as a team with other folks, even despite whether our views are the same or different and, and really, um, impart my knowledge on how to allocate funds, how to manage large teams. Um, obviously the technology is a factor. If you want to be a best-in-class school district, you better embrace technology because it is here, whether you like it or not, and you better be able to do it, um, efficiently if you want to keep your costs down. And that is something that I could be really successful at, at least, um, providing some guidance there. Um, and, you know, with the federal stuff that I have to, uh, follow as far as compliance and regulation, that's a huge part of my job. It's a huge part of school systems and, and education. But, um, I know how important that is to make sure that, you know, you remain compliant, but do the best you can with a, a very tight, um, tight budget, tight timeline, you know, trying to kind of take a, a good road to take care of what is most important at the time. And I know how important it is to be agile because what we address, you know, could change daily, um, let alone weekly. So I think to, uh, I do a lot of risk management, um, that's kind of where I started in my career. So I could definitely help the district, um, form a better risk management system. Um, but this is all stuff that's being pushed down at the federal level too. So if they get ahead of it, it's going to be less of a headache, you know, a couple of years from now after, um, Biden's talk on and focus on like K-12 and security and that type of stuff, to get the, um, the core, uh, you know, core stuff in place to be able to successfully run a district. So I think the administration does a good job with what they have, but I think that external view and kind of that larger worldly, worldly view, I can't even English today, would be very helpful, um, and, you know, at least offering what I can to kind of help them.
Excellent. Krista Arnt, thank you very much. I appreciate your time and I think the community does as well. Good luck on Tuesday because of what we do here at Up the Middle and Yurk's Radio, there's no endorsements for any candidates at all. We stay in the middle. Uh, but without question, uh, wish you all the best. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, sir.
All right. That concluded our interview with Krista Arnt, running for school board director for the Boyer Town School District. Stay tuned for our next episode when we talk with Jessica Skelton about these very same issues. Thanks for watching.